Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene will be missing the open session part of the agenda and she will be calling in on the E session. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Woolridge would like to say something prior to our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance.
I would just like to share that, you know, agrees my heart with the way that our country and the world is heading right now. So I just wanted to share with you what I will be praying about during our moment of silence. I am going to pray for those families who have lost loved ones as a result of hatred and bigotry, as well as pray that the hearts and minds of people will change and that we will judge people based on the content of their character and not what they look like. And I'd also like to pray that we will not just recite the Pledge of Allegiance, but live those words as they are written in the pledge. Because we, the world is in a mess and we need to do something to make the change. And I'll remind myself that the change begins with me. So can we stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, good and quiet of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will open call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do not have any requests for a call to the public at this time. Are there any members of the audience that would like anything to say at this time? With that, we are going to close call to the public. We are going to move around the agenda slightly to have the CFDs presented at 6:00 PM as properly advertised. So beginning with item number eight, which is our presentation by Willdan Financial Services and Economist.com on the 2017 water and wastewater rate study and the financial forecast with Mr. Jess Knudsen.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's been about a little over two months ago, the Florence Town Council approved the contract with Willdan and Economist.com to start the process of updating our water and wastewater fees. So this evening, tonight, is Mr. Dan Jackson, who is leading the effort on behalf of his staff to take a look at our water and wastewater fees and identifying the means of adjusting those to match up with the products and the operation and the other costs the town has with regards to providing those services. So tonight he'll talk about, a little bit about comparison and where our fees look like as part of the state average and other communities and providers in Arizona, as well as update council on different approaches that we may or may not take with regards to our fees. For example, if water conservation is something that's important to council, that's something that can be discussed and we can direct Mr. Jackson to take a different direction than the town has in the past. Or if we want to continue on with the same type of rate structure we have in the past, then that's something that is also up for discussion. So we're looking for some of your feedback here tonight. But with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Dan Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Jackson, Vice President of Willdan Financial Services, formerly known as Economist.com. As Jess indicated, we had the privilege of being selected to assist the town with its 2017 water and wastewater rate study. The study is in process right now. The purpose of my presentation tonight is not to present you with any rate recommendations. The process of setting a long-term rate plan, it consists of several steps. And a rate plan is much more than just a set of numbers. It's just more than just, it's far more than just a set of financial decisions. Rate plans reflect the policy decisions that you as a town want to implement. Rates are very malleable. They can be, you can have 100 different rate plans that are going to get you the rates and the revenues necessary to run your operations. The key question that you as decision-makers for the town need to make is, what rate plan is most just, reasonable, and fair? That is not just a financial decision. It's a social decision and it's a community decision as well. And so the purpose of my presentation tonight is to present you with an introduction to our study. What are we doing? What decisions need to be made? What guidance can we get from you regarding the most just and reasonable rate plan to put into effect for the town? This is, we think that this will be a very effective presentation because you're not going to be asked to make any decisions tonight. You're not going to be asked to raise anybody's rates tonight. In fact, the rate increases are not even a foregone conclusion as a result of this study. It is just a matter of trying to develop the right policy and the right preferences that you as a council want us to implement. I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about what your current rates are and how your rates compare to other cities, because that is typically a area that councils and rate payers spend a lot of time focusing on. I'm going to talk a little bit about your history of rate adjustments, how have your rates changed over the last 10 to 15 years. Then I'll talk about what the general goals are and what the components are of a rate plan. I'll follow that up by talking about some potential alternative rate designs. You have a rate design in place today. You don't necessarily have to keep that rate design. You can change it to reflect changes in policy if you'd like. I mean, Florence is a different town today than it was 10 years ago, like most cities are. As cities change, it may be beneficial for you to rethink some of the assumptions that went into the current rate plan that you have in place today. And we'll discuss that a little bit. And then I'll just summarize by talking a little bit about our schedule for completion of the study itself. As a bit of an introduction, who are we? Economist.com has had the privilege of being the town's water and wastewater rate consultant since 2007. We've been here for just about a decade. We've assisted with several projects with the town. We assisted in negotiations with Johnson and Utilities in 2007 and 2014. We did rate studies for the town in 2009 and 2011, as well as the current rate study that's being in place today. You hear me talk about Willdan Financial Services? Well, Willdan actually purchased and acquired Economist.com in 2015. However, the same people that have been working for the town for the last decade are still here working for the town. So we're the same people, we just have a different and arguably better name. I want to start this presentation out by talking a little bit about water and wastewater rates, both in the state of Arizona and around the country, because it's a very hot-button issue. I've done probably about 250 to 300 presentations before councils around the country in my career. And so I understand, I think, better than most people how, well, how important an issue, the issue of water resources are to not only cities here in Arizona, but cities all throughout the United States. Water rates are going up. The cost of providing water service all across the United States is going up. As a matter of fact, the average utility has been raising its rates 5% to 6% every year for the last decade, and that trend is expected to continue in the future. Why is this happening? A lot of people ask the question, you know, why should water cost any more today than it did 10 years ago? I mean, after all, it tastes the same. I mean, I turned my tap on today, just like I did in 1995, so why should my water cost anymore? Well, there's a lot of reasons for that, but the most key and important reason is that water is a business. You, unlike many other services, water is a business where you want the revenue that you get from your rates to cover all the costs of providing that service. So like any business, costs go up over time. They go up for a lot of reasons that are beyond your control. Heck, due to inflation, the cost of everything goes up by 3% a year. When you look at the water industry, many specific costs of water are going up at rates even higher than inflation. We're all worried about healthcare costs. Healthcare costs are going up at an alarming rate. That impacts our family budget, but it impacts our water rates too, because you have to pay healthcare costs to the employees that run your water system. So there are a lot of reasons that are really beyond your control, and that is pushing up the cost of water throughout the United States. Now, when we do rate comparisons, there's another important thing to keep in mind, and that is that 30% to 40% of utilities in the United States right now are charging rates that do not cover their costs. So just because another utility's rates are lower than yours, that doesn't necessarily mean that they run a more efficient operation or that their costs are lower. They might have made the decision to subsidize their water utility from their general fund. Now, there's nothing wrong with doing that. How, I don't think it's necessarily the best financial policy, but it's certainly not illegal to do that. A lot of utilities do it. But the town of Florence's water and wastewater utility, the goal has always been to be self-sufficient. You want rate payers to pay nothing more than what it costs you to provide that service. Another important thing to keep in mind is that larger cities typically have lower rates, for two reasons. One, a city like, for example, a Phoenix, has a very large commercial base, and so they push a lot of their costs onto their commercial customers. And secondly, water utilities run through something called economies of scale. The more customers you have, particularly in a concentrated area, the less it costs to provide service to each customer. Smaller towns like Florence, unfortunately, just due to the laws of economics, are going to have higher per capita costs. The bottom line is that as we enter the 21st century, water, while it still is an amazingly cheap resource, considering the fact that we literally can't live without it, is simply going to be a little bit more expensive in the 21st century. Okay, I've talked a little bit about rates in general. Let's now talk specifically about the town of Florence. Florence has a fairly unique system. You have some customers that are charged based on per thousand gallons, and you have some customers that are charged based on cubic feet. It's very unique. I very, of my 200 or so clients, I can only think of one other that does this. And so it's very unusual that it has that system. But I do want to mention one thing that's very important is that the rates are different per cubic foot as opposed to per thousand gallons, but they're equivalent in the amount of water that you use. So a person who has a cubic foot meter does not pay a lower rate than a person who has a thousand gallon meter. I'll just say in general, your rates are basically in line with other similar Arizona communities. I'll show you some proof of that in a minute. And, most importantly, you're facing the same issues that other cities all across Arizona are facing. Your costs are going up, your system has to be repaired, it has to be replaced, it has to be overhauled. After all, it costs a lot of money to build a water system. It costs a lot of money to lay those pipes in the ground and to build those pump stations and to build those towers. And like any other asset, they wear out over time, and you have to invest in keeping them functioning to a level of service that your customers are going to be satisfied with. All of that costs money. And laying pipe and doing things like that are even more expensive today than they were 20 years ago, so all of those are pushing up your costs. Okay, this is your current rate structure. Most of your residential customers have what's called a 5/8 inch, 3/4 inch meter. They pay a minimum charge of $22.34 for that service. They then pay a rate for every thousand gallons of water they use, based on the amount of water that they use. If they use between 0 and 10,000 gallons, they pay $1.59 per thousand gallons. If they use between 10,000 and 18,700 gallons, that rate goes up to $2.21, and then over 18,700 gallons, the rate goes up again to $3.93. This is what's known as a conservation rate. It's called an inverted block. The more you use, the more you pay. It has several benefits. One benefit is that the lowest volume users pay the lowest rate. It also provides a disincentive to people to use greater amounts of water. The water's available to them, they just pay more for it, so that gives them a real financial incentive to minimize their usage. And as you can see, the people pay similar rates per cubic foot. Okay, on the wastewater side, customers pay a monthly service fee of $18.55, and if you're a residential customer, you pay a rate per thousand gallons of $4.35. And it's basically the same if you're a commercial rate, and it's a little higher if you're an institutional customer. Now, what does this mean in terms of what people pay each month? Well, if you use 5,000 gallons of water and wastewater service, you pay $65.14 a month for that service. If you use 10,000 gallons, that bill, monthly bill, goes up to $89. But as you can see, as you use higher amounts of water, your water bill goes way up. If you use 30,000 gallons of water, your bill goes up to $218, and if you use 50,000 gallons of water, it goes up to $362. Now, the average household here in the town of Florence uses between 7,000 and 8,000 gallons a month. There are residential customers who use 30,000 gallons, but there aren't that many of them. And so your rate structure is working exactly the way it was designed to work. The more you use, the more you pay. The water is available, but it gives you a real incentive to use as little water as possible. Now, the next question people ask is, well, how do our rates compare to the rest of the state of Arizona? I would think the answer generally is your rates compare pretty favorably. If you're a customer using about the average amount, which is about 7,500 gallons of water and wastewater service a month, you pay $77.27 for that service. That's about $13 below the state average for Arizona. So you're actually about, about 20% below the state average. Now, furthermore, compared to other cities, you're about where you would expect to be. This chart right here compares 7,500 gallons of water and wastewater service in Florence to some of your neighbors and other similar cities here in the state of Arizona. As you can see, your monthly bill of $77.27 is a little higher than some of your neighbors. You're a little higher than Somerton and San Luis and Snowflake, and you're about the same as Casa Grande and Eloy and Prescott Valley, and you're below many of your other neighbors. Most notably, you're below Johnson Utilities, and you're below Epcor. You're significantly below Epcor. And as I said earlier, you are below the state average as well. So bottom line is, you're about where you would expect to be. You're higher than some, you're lower than others, and, but certainly, your rates are not out of proportion when you compare them to what other people in Arizona are paying for water and sewer service. So how'd your rates get to where they are? Well, in 2009, we did a rate study for the town of Florence, actually 2008, 2009. And as a result of that rate study, the town council adopted a five-year rate plan. They adopted a plan whereby, in a single ordinance, you would have rate adjustments that automatically went into effect, I believe in January, of each of the next five years. It was set about as a result of a long-term financial forecast. Well, after the study was done in the 2009, 2010 timeframe, if you'll recall, that's when the economy crashed. And so growth came to a screeching halt in the state of Arizona, and a lot of the dynamics changed. And so as a result of that, the study decided, the town decided to update its study in 2011. The study was updated and a new rate plan, slightly modified, and I would not call it significantly modified, but slightly modified, was put into place. I think that was a prudent decision on the part of the town, because after all, rate plans and forecasts are not guarantees. They are predictions based on a series of reasonable assumptions. If I could tell the future perfectly, I probably wouldn't be standing here tonight. But I can't. All I can do is use reasonable sets of assumptions. And when something that nobody expects happens, like the Great Recession of 2009, a prudently run city adjusts its plans accordingly, and that's exactly what you did. You adopted a new five-year plan in 2011, but not all of the five years of adjustments were actually, ended up being implemented. This is the rate plan that was actually adopted by the town. This says "current," but it actually should mean "prior." That was the rate plan that was in effect in 2011, and as you can see, the study recommended a set of five adjustments, five annual adjustments to take place in July of each of the following five years. Three of the adjustments were put in place, and the last two adjustments were put on hold, I think, pending the outcome of a new analysis. So this right here is what your current rate structure is right now. Okay, so now we're in 2017, and we're undergoing the process of doing a new rate study. We're all in this together, and we hope that whatever ends up being adopted by the town fully reflects not only your financial needs, but also your preferences, your policy preferences as a community. What are some of the goals that a rate study and a financial plan attempt to accomplish for a city? Well, the first and foremost, the goal is to continue to provide a superior quality of water and wastewater service. Look, nobody ever wants to raise rates. Nobody wants to do that. Nobody wants to raise, nobody wants to pay more for anything at any time, for any reason. However, you have responsibilities as a community, and one of your responsibilities is to maintain an acceptably high level of service. Because while you don't want to pay more for service, you also don't want to turn your tap and have nothing come out of it. Water systems require investment. Sometimes costs go up, and so sometimes difficult decisions need to be made to invest in the system to assure that a good quality of service will continue to be experienced by the town. Another goal is to minimize any increases without impairing the quality of service. That's why you do long-term plans. One of the benefits of doing a long-term water and wastewater rate plan is that you can forecast for a number of years what expenses are going to need to be undertaken. And so if you know that you have to do a major capital project in 2020, you can start planning for it now and minimize the impact on your rate payers. See, rate payers don't like big sudden increases. What they like is gradual adjustments. At least, that's my experience throughout most of the country. Rate payers would prefer a staged set of annual adjustments as opposed to keeping rates flat for three years and then doing a 30% increase. Nobody likes surprises. And so, one of the benefits of doing a long-term plan like this is it enables you to schedule and phase in any necessary adjustments. So, excuse me. So when you do a rates, when you do a long-term financial plan, you have to have rates that recover what is called the cost of service. In other words, you look at all of the costs that your water and wastewater utility are incurring, and you set rates in order to recover all of those costs. What are some of the components of costs? What cost does a water system incur? Well, the, one set of costs are known as operating expenses. Those are the general expenses that a utility incurs in its day-to-day operation, personnel, gasoline, chemicals, uniforms, you know, healthcare, that kind of thing. Well, all of those are going to be factored in, this latest rate study, like they have been in prior studies. And one of the things that's factored in is the fact that these costs are going to go up. You know, your costs are going to be greater tomorrow than they are today, for no other reason, just due to inflation. We're also factoring in the fact that some expenses, like healthcare, are going to continue to go up at higher rates, and so that has to be factored in as well. Many, however, one thing I do want to mention is, I think you run a very tight ship here. I think many of your maintenance costs, a lot of your personnel levels, they're going to remain pretty consistent over the next five to 10 years, and I think that is a sign of good staff management. And I think that that needs to be taken into consideration, because you can't keep costs down forever, but you can minimize those things that you have control over, and I think you're doing a very good job of that. And then finally, some of the factors that you need to take into consideration is future growth. You know, you're going to have some new subdivisions, you're going to have some new residential accounts. If the prisons expand, that's going to impact your long-term rate plan as well. The other major component of costs is your capital expenses. Capital expenses are the long-term investments that are used to build, replace, and refurbish your water and wastewater infrastructure. So you've got, on the one hand, your operating expenses, and on the other hand, your capital expenses. Well, capital expenses impact your water rates in three ways. One, how much do you have to spend? Two, when do you have to spend it? And three, how are you going to finance it? Are you going to pay, are you going to do what's known as pay-as-you-go? In other words, try to pay for it throughout of your regular funds? Or are you going to issue long-term debt? And some of those decisions, we're going to look for guidance from you as a council for. I mean, nobody likes to issue debt, but sometimes debt, sometimes properly managed debt can minimize the need for rate increases. Okay, in the last part of my presentation, I want to talk a little bit about some of your rate, some potential rate design alternatives, because there is no one right answer here. When you do a long-term water and wastewater rate plan, you could literally do 100 different plans that will get you the revenues you need. The question that needs to be answered is, what is the most just, reasonable, and fair rate plan? And only you, as the representatives of the community, can make that decision. So in these last couple of charts, we'd like for you to think about some of the decisions that could go into making this overall decision with regards to what's most just, reasonable, and fair. Let's take a look, for example, at your current rate plan. Your current rate plan, as I said, is an inverted block. What is the advantage of the rate plan as it exists right now? Well, one advantage is it clearly encourages conservation. Water is a precious and diminishing natural resource, and inverted block rate makes sure that people use water in the most prudent way possible. It also results in the lowest rates on your lowest volume customers, who typically, though not always, but typically are your low-income and fixed-income people. It's also a very popular rate plan. Inverted block rates are the most popular rate plan in America today. I would estimate that probably 70% of utilities across the United States have some form of inverted block rate. But there is a disadvantage in inverted block rates. The disadvantage is, if you're a high-volume user, you pay a lot more than a low-volume user does. And high-volume users, they don't like that very much, and they may want to let you know that they don't like that very much. So, like anything, there are advantages and disadvantages. So, let's talk about some potential alternatives to the current rate structure that you've got. One alternative is that you keep your current inverted block rates, but you adjust the rate tiers. You have some, you have some, what I would call unusual rate tiers. Your rate tiers are 0 to 10,000 gallons, 10,000 to 18,700, and then 18,700 and above. Well, most cities that do inverted blocks, they like round numbers. 0 to 10, 10 to 20, 20 to 30, and so on and so forth. So, and what more and more cities are beginning to do is they're putting a block from 0 to 5,000, which is a very low rate, because once again, to try to help their low-income and fixed-income people to the best extent possible, they put in what they call a super-low block. So you might want to consider, maybe, maybe we change some of the, some of the rate tiers. What are the advantages of this? Well, it might be, you might consider it to be more fair, to have, say, a 0 to 5,000 block and a 5 to 10. And it may be more logical as well. The disadvantage is, it could disproportionately impact certain people. When you change rate structures, you change how people pay their monthly bills. And what happens is, some people end up paying a little less or no more under the new rate structure, and some people end up paying a lot more under the new rate structure. Well, guess who you're probably going to hear from? You're going to hear from the people who pay a lot more, and you're not necessarily going to hear from the people who don't pay anymore. So if you're going to do this, you have to recognize that you're going to impact some people more than others. Okay, there's another rate plan that you might want to consider, and it's what's known as lifeline rates. The concept behind a lifeline rate is that you charge lower rates to certain customers based on, who qualify for this lifeline rate, based on such factors as their income level, whether or not they're senior citizens, if they're 65 or older, for example, or if there's some kind of hardship. One, one city that I work with has recently implemented a disabled persons rate. So if you're disabled, you get a certain rate. The most common form of lifeline rate is a senior citizens rate. If you're 65 or older, you pay X dollars less per month. The advantage is that it clearly can be designed to help your neediest rate payers. The disadvantage is that, what, rates are like squeezing a balloon. If you squeeze in one area, another, another part of the balloon pops out. In other words, if you give a break to certain customers, you have to charge a little more to other customers. So while it is a compassionate thing to do, to try to take care of your neediest people, you have to recognize that in order to do that, you have to charge everybody else a little bit more, because you've got to get your money from somewhere. But those, once again, are the policy decisions that we look to you to help, to provide assistance to us in making that final decision. Third potential rate is, you say, you know, to heck with these inverted block rates. I don't like the idea of paying more just because you use more water. Let's just put a uniform rate in. You know, X dollars... You know, X dollars per 1,000 gallons, and that's what you pay, no matter how many thousand gallons you use. There are cities that do that. The advantage is that, of that, is that it can be seen as being very fair. No matter how many waters, gallons you use, you pay $4.50 per 1,000 gallons, or whatever the number ends up being. You know, so, some people consider that to be very fair. Furthermore, it's more in line with water cost economics. Water costs, ironically, the more water you produce, generally the less it costs you to produce it. So, in, uniform blocks are generally more in line with water utility economics. The disadvantage is that, first of all, it does not encourage conservation. I mean, conservation is an important principle that we need to follow because we have a lot of people, we have 6 billion people on the planet today, we had 1 billion people 100 years ago, but we've got the exact same amount of fresh water. And as we continue to grow as a population, we have to take care of our precious and finite natural resource. And, uniform rates don't do that. The other thing is that if you go from an inverted block to a uniform rate, what it's going to mean is that your low-volume users are going to pay more, and your high-volume users are going to pay less. And you can do that if you want, but that is something that might have some negative repercussions. So, everything has an advantage and a disadvantage. Okay, another concept, seasonal rates. This is something that some people, that some cities do. What they do is, they say, we're going to charge you $4,000 a 1,000 gallons in the winter months, but once July hits, we're going to raise that rate to $6,000 a 1,000 gallons. So in July, August, September, or June, July, August, September, whatever you deem as your summer months, you're going to pay more, and in the winter months, you're going to pay less. The advantage of that is that, that, that does encourage conservation. It encourages prudent water usage. But the disadvantages of this is that, first of all, it's difficult to implement on a, from a billing system. It's tough for a billing system to do that. Secondly, it leads to sudden increases, and it's hard for ratepayers to keep track of it. I mean, you're asking your ratepayers to know that June 1st, the rate goes up. Well, not everybody knows that. You know, I'm a rate consultant. I live in Frisco, Texas, and sometimes I don't even know what my water rate is. So, you're asking your ratepayers to know that June 1st, their bill goes up. They may not know that, and suddenly they get their June bill, it's a lot higher than their May bill, and they're probably not happy about that. So, seasonal rates have kind of fallen out of favor, but there are some communities that still use it. And then the last but not least, there is, well, I'll save the least one for last, and that is what is known as fixed-in-variable rates. What a fixed-invariable rate does is, you take all of your fixed costs and you put it in your monthly charge. And the thing is, in a water and sewer system, most of your costs are fixed. I would say 70 to 75% of your water costs are fixed. I mean, you have to pay your people, whether you sell one gallon or 1 billion gallons. And so, you have debt service that you have to pay, whether you sell one gallon or 1 billion gallons. So you take all your fixed costs and you put it in the monthly charge. And then all your variable costs, you put in your 1,000-gallon rate. Well, the advantage of that is that it's great for the utility, because it's a guaranteed revenue stream. It means that every month, somebody pays all of your fixed costs. All your ratepayers are paying all your fixed costs, and you're not dependent on volumes in order for you to meet all of your fixed obligations. But, there is a huge disadvantage. The disadvantage is that it would mean that your monthly charge would be a lot higher than it is today. I don't know precisely what it would be, but I wouldn't be surprised if, if it would be more than twice what your monthly charge is. And that monthly charge has to be paid by everybody. Whether that person is a retired couple living on a fixed income, or a young millionaire living in a 5,000-square-foot house, they would both pay the same rate. So, it would be, a lot of people consider that not to be fair, and to tell you the truth, very few communities do fixed-invariable rates. So as you can see, there's a lot of different ways we can do this. Our goal is to work with you to ensure that whatever rate plan gets put into place, not only gets you the revenues you need to run your operation, but also is considered to be most just, reasonable, and fair by the community. Current status of the study is, we have, we have had a series of meetings with staff. We've gone over, you know, the utility background, we've gotten a lot of data. Staff has done an exceptional job getting us data, the data that we need to do this study. We've had several phone conversations, we're going to have another couple of meetings with them in the next couple of weeks. We have a comprehensive rate model, it's based on the model that we've used for you in the past. We're updating it right now. We're going to have a wholly new model with, with some great new algorithms in it that will help you, you know, make these, make these decisions. And we expect that probably we will have some preliminary results between, within, I would say, 30, probably more likely 60 days after the final receipt of data from the town. So we're coming along well, and we'll be before you, not, in the not-too-distant future, to go over all of the, all of the preliminary findings. So I just want to close this presentation by saying that, you know, a rate study, a financial plan, it's really a tool that you can use to achieve the objectives that you want to achieve as a community. There, there's social, community, political decisions, just as much as they are financial decisions. It's difficult for a financial guy like me to admit that, but it certainly is the case. And in the coming months, we certainly hope that we are able to present you with a final product that not only meets your expectations, but also meets the expectations of the community as well. That really concludes my prepared remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
That was a very comprehensive presentation. I appreciate your efforts moving forward.
Thank you.
Are there any members of council that have any questions or clarifications?
From my perspective, I was just wondering if it would be possible to know how many of our users are in each of the different categories in terms of usage, and then also what percentage of users are in those categories?
We're, we're trying to compile that data right now, but I can tell you from a, from an arithmetic principle, since your average usage is 7,000 to 8,000 gallons, I would estimate that probably about 70% of your monthly bills are going to be 10,000 gallons or less. So, now, now think about how people use water. You know, let's say you're a family of four, living in a home here in Florence. In the winter months, you're not going to be using that much water, because you're not going to be using outdoor water at all. But in the summer months, you're going to be using a lot more. So you may only be using 5,000 or 6,000 gallons in the winter months. But in the summer months, you might be using 15,000 to 20,000 gallons. So, it's only a couple of months of the year that you use large amounts of water. Most of the time, your bill is going to be pretty nominal, it's going to be pretty low. So like I said, we will have exact data at the time the study is complete, but just as a basic rule of thumb, I would consider probably about 70% of your bills are 10,000 gallons or less.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, we just want to thank you for the presentation at this time.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A is ratification of the reelection of Cory Pine as an employee representative on the Town of Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Fire Local Board for a period of four years. Item B, Resolution Number 1637-17, which is adoption of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, approving the final plat for a re-subdivision of parcels 5, 6, 7, 13, 17, and 24, and tract J of Mesquite Trails, requiring the provision of an infrastructure improvement assurance to secure satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of required improvements, establishing a deadline for required improvements to be completed, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Item C is Resolution Number 1638-17, which is the adoption of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, approving the final plat for a re-subdivision of parcel 5 of Mesquite Trails, parcel 5, requiring the provision of an infrastructure improvement assurance to secure satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of the required improvements, establishing a deadline for the required improvements to be completed, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Item D is approval of the GIS Enterprise License Agreement renewal for three years with Environmental Systems Research Institute in the amount not to exceed $81,525. Item E is approval of the July 17, 2017 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes. Do I have any members of public or council that would like anything removed at this With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as read.
My second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 10 is New Business, Resolution Number 1634-17, which is going to be the discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, endorsing and supporting the regionally significant routes for safety and mobility update. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, council members. About three months ago, Pinau County sent a representative, Andy Smith, to come give a presentation regarding the update of the routes of regional significance for safety and mobility study conducted by Pinau County. The initial study was put together by all the cities and towns, cities and towns in Pinau County, as well as the county in 2008. It was a leap in a new direction for Pinau County in terms of identifying those routes that were going to be critical moving forward for high-capacity movement of traffic and coordination between all of the cities and towns and counties as, as to development standards for those roads and what we called a red-ribbon process for notifying adjacent entities when transportation projects are done. This year, Pinau County decided to go ahead and amend that study and update it with some new traffic numbers. We got an opportunity as a staff to have input into the study, and, and clearly, one of the things that's intended by the amendment is also placing what we all refer to as the north-south freeway alignment, which they represent in their plan as the RTA Parkway. Because if the tax initiative that goes in front of the voters in November gets passed, it's not to build an interstate freeway, it's to build a regional facility on an alignment that could day, could be a highway at some point. So, with that said, I come before you for a resolution of support for Pinau County. Ms. Clerk, do you want me to read the entire resolution? There's no need to read the entire resolution, so it's up for council discussion and potential
I wanted you to read the resolution.
Okay, I will do so.
Thank you.
Bear with me, because I don't have bifocals, so it's going to take a minute for my eyes to adjust.
Okay.
Resolution Number 163417, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, endorsing and supporting the regionally significant routes for safety and mobility update. Whereas many towns, many cities, towns, tribal communities, and unincorporated areas in Pinau County are experiencing unprecedented growth, creating considerable transportation needs for the traveling public, and whereas developing transportation system to accommodate travel demands for the public is necessary to ensure high-quality life and continued growth in Pinau County, and whereas Pinau County and cities and towns, tribal communities within Pinau County wish to develop a safe and efficient transportation system in accordance with the regional planning concepts, concepts acceptable to Pinau County, and whereas it is in the best interest of Pinau County and the cities, towns, and tribal communities within Pinau County to develop a regional transportation plan that provides for a high level of mobility, encourages connectivity and transportation improvement projects, and coordinates planning activities, and whereas Town of Florence Council, the Town Council of Florence, Arizona, supports the development of a regional transportation plan for Pinau County and commits staff to participate in efforts to develop regional transportation plan and identify and preserve regionally significant routes. And whereas the regionally significant routes for safety and mobility update includes a corridor preservation map for regionally significant routes to be used by Pinau County, the cities, towns, tribal communities for pursuing right-of-way as development occurs and implementing the routes according to the regionally significant routes for safety and mobility study. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the mayor and council of Town of Florence, Arizona, as follows. One, the mayor and town council endorses and supports recommendations and finding of the regionally significant routes for safety and mobility study, and recommends its approval by the Pinau County Board of Supervisors. And two, the mayor and town council may reconsider incorporating the identified corridors from the regionally significant routes for safety and mobility update into its transportation improvement plan or capital improvement program. Are you pleased with the reading?
Yes, sir. The educator in me wanted to tell you to slow down. However, the reason why I wanted you to read it, some of the, the key points that I really wanted communicated, and you did a great job of that, was we're looking towards the future. We have a partnership. We're planning for, you know, the unprecedented growth. We're ensuring that we're planning routes for safe travel that is effective. And I think that's very important, that we have that partnership and that we're planning for the future. Does any members of council have any questions or comments at that time? And thank you for reading that, Mr. Billingsley. Now with that, I would like a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1634-17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 1635-17, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 52, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Michelle Orton.
Mayor Walter, and council members. Pulte Home Corporation requests approval of the proposed subdivision located at, located within the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Plan Unit Development. The area will be part of the Sun City portion. There are 124 single-family residential lots proposed on 61 acres with a density of 2.02 for just this subdivision. The accompanying resolution for this final plat adds an extra precaution to ensure that no homes will be constructed on lots that may be within the FEMA-designated floodplains. Neighborhood streets in this unit are designed and constructed with a 40-foot right-of-way, which is consistent with the PUD. Though the, though the 40-foot right-of-way will be utilized for this subdivision, the improvement plans for this unit will reflect modifications to the local street sidewalk standard to ensure ADA compliance. The preliminary plat was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 15, 2016. A vote no would mean that the council has rejected it, and the applicant would be required to return to the final plat process with new revisions. A vote for yes would mean that the final plat is approved and it will be recorded with Pinau County. Pulte Home will construct the roadways within the subdivision to Town standards and will maintain the roadways until the end of the construction warranty period. And that's what I have.
Okay, now, in regards to those plats that are not included, what would be the process for them to build upon those plats in the future?
The plats or the lots? Are we talking about the lots in the flood?
The lots within the plat. I apologize for my vocabulary.
That's okay. And those lots, they will not be able to build onto until that they have a LOMAR and they are no longer in a flood zone or in the floodplain, and then they can build on those lots. But right now, they would not be able to.
Okay. Now, my one question concern would be, before you speak, sir. If we move forward and we build on others, and then there's changes to allow for building to occur on the ones that are currently exempt, and it changes the building, or, I'm not speaking correctly. So if we move forward with the exemption, and then in the future, if they change it to allow the building to occur on that lot, what happens if it changes the sites that were built upon already?
I'm coming to the rescue.
And you know that's possible, Brent, because it's happened before in our town.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to do my best to provide two different answers to this question. So, the first one is, is very direct, and I think that's why Randy was standing up a second ago. There are no houses in this parcel that are in the floodplain currently. So, that's other areas that, that are, that are part of, of the plat. The other plats that have come forward and future plats to go forward, but in, is this 56A? 52? There are no lots in the floodplain in 52. So, that's the first answer. The second one is, is what you're, I believe, want me to explain to the public, Mayor, and that is, we've agreed to a process with Pulte that was ratified at the last meeting, to not allow not only construction on lots that are currently in the floodplain, but sale of the property at all. So it can't be sold, it, it can't have a, a house built on it, there can't be a permit pulled, et cetera. It's essentially a lot hold on that individual lot. However, in the plat itself... However, in the plat itself, the lots are created. So the lots are sized as appropriate. That won't change. As well as the engineering is in the plat, once again, not in this parcel, but in the other parcels where this may occur, the engineering to take the lot out of the floodplain is actually in the engineering plans in the plat. So although the letter of map revision, which is the formal federal approval by FEMA to take the lot out of the floodplain, would not be included in the plat, the engineering, the cut sheets, et cetera, associated with the fill and/or cut that would make that happen are in the individual plats when they're approved. But nonetheless, whether that happens upfront or at the end of the process, there will be a hold placed on that lot. It won't be able to be sold. There won't be the ability to issue a building permit on that lot until the LOMAR is approved. Does that help?
That definitely clarifies it, and I just wanted to make sure we did clarify that, especially understanding what we just went through in the past six months.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to say anything at this time as well? Councilmember Larson?
It's mentioned here, I don't know who can answer this, but the dwelling units per acre is different. Before it was, now in this one, it's going to be 2.02 compared to, it looks like, the PUD zoning permit and overall, single-family residential density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre. How is that going to look, I guess aesthetically? Is it going to be the same? Or aesthetically look different?
Some of those, the total, the maximum, is 3.5 dwelling units per acre. So some of the subdivisions have, for example, 2.02. There are some that have 4.0. So in the end, it's all going to be 3.5.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any more questions? All right. If there are no more questions, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 1635-17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. 10C, resolution number 1636-17, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 56A, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Michelle Orton.
Mayor Walter, council members, ditto. No, I'm just kidding. Again, Polte Home is requesting approval of the proposed subdivision located at Anthem at Merrill Ranch, PUD. The area will also be part of the Sun City portion. There are 49 single-family residential lots proposed on 24.56 acres, and the density is 2.0. The, as before, the neighborhood streets in this unit are designed and constructed with a 40-foot right-of-way, which is consistent with the PUD zoning. And the improvement plans for this unit will reflect modifications to the local street sidewalk standard to ensure ADA compliance. The preliminary plat, 56A, was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 15, 2016. And again, a no vote would mean that the plat has been rejected and they would need to return to the final plat process with their new revisions. A yes vote is that it will be approved and will be recorded with the Penal County recorder. Polte will construct the roadways within the subdivision to town standards and will maintain the roadways until the end of the construction warranty period.
Thank you. Polte, would you like to say anything at this time? Okay. Any members of council have any questions? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 1636-17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 10D is approval, discussion approval, disapproval of authorizing staff to commence with development agreement negotiations with Circle K Stores Incorporated for the proposed convenience store.
Madam Mayor, members of council, two meetings in a row, I'm here in front of you with an application for development agreement. Tonight, I'm before you with respect to Circle K Stores. We have received a development agreement application, been fully completed. And as you know, we've been in discussions with Circle K about the construction of a new 5,881-square-foot store along the model of the new Circle K's being built around the state. And they would like to be in line to bring one to Florence, Arizona. There is a representative from Circle K here this evening, but from staff's perspective, we are ready to negotiate a development agreement with Circle K, including some of the items that have been discussed by council and P&amp;Z previously.
Thank you. Circle K, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor Walter, members of council. My name's Mike Scarborough with Land Development Consultants here on behalf of Circle K. Really just here to answer any questions you guys may have regarding our application.
All right. Council members, do you have any questions at this time?
Yes. I don't know if it's part of our development agreement, but what's going to happen to the old Circle K building?
Ms. Mayor, Councilman Anderson, our intent and our, what we were moving towards is when the new store is constructed and open, the other two stores will be closed. Fuel tanks and fuel canopies will be fully removed from the facilities.
Thank you.
Do you have any plans to, and I have questions on both ends, do you have any plans to sell them, rent them, lease them?
Ms. Mayor, the, both assets are currently leased assets for Circle K. They don't have ownership interest in them.
Do you know if the owner is going to be pursuing either of those options?
Yes, ma'am. That's our understanding. And I believe that there's still a little bit of time left on one of them that we may actually be able to sublease. Our intent is, as we've discussed with the town previously, is not to leave vacant buildings. Our intent is to try to help them get repurposed.
Yes, and I know that that has been clearly communicated all along, and we do appreciate that because we definitely don't want two of our largest stores on Main Street to not go utilized.
Understood.
So tell the residents of Florence, because right now, we have our newspaper here. You're on TV. Tell us about the new Circle K and what it offers to the residents for those that may not be familiar with the new facilities.
Sure. The new Circle K stores, the 5881 specifically, is what we call our food venience option. The food venience option is opening up and expanding the food offering inside the store. So you're going to have more fresh options from sandwiches and salads to greater drink and healthy snack options. In addition to all the other things Circle K typically has inside their facilities, they're going to be including into that more fresh options for the consumers. It's a much larger layout. It's going to have a larger variety of some of the same things they've always sold. And then in addition to that, we're going to have a larger gas canopy and gas offer there as well. So from Circle K's perspective, this is something that's been needed to have happened, and we are implementing this type of program across the state right now. Not only in Arizona, it's actually a countrywide initiative, but for our benefit, for the state, we're doing this new store format and layout everywhere that we're redeveloping.
All right. Thank you very much.
So will it be similar to the store that you built in Coolidge, that was built in Coolidge? Will it have a kitchen like that store?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we need a motion to authorize staff to commence with the development agreement negotiations with Circle K Stores.
Make a motion to authorize staff to commence with development agreement negotiations with Circle K Stores for the proposed convenience store.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. It is 6:02 PM, so we are going to go back up to adjourning to Merrill Ranch Community Facility Districts Number Two at this time.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item A is the public hearing on feasibility reports for projects, the construction of which to be financed with the proceeds of sale of general obligation bonds. Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Last Thursday, we held a public meeting. It was not like a regular public meeting that I speak at, because it was more of an informational meeting. I didn't have to say very much at it, which was wonderful. And we relied upon our consultants in Polte to share a lot of comments. It was a very well-attended meeting. There was quite a bit of confusion. Based upon the questions that we received during the meeting, there's quite a bit of confusion. And as I understand it, in the Merrill Ranch communities, we have a reoccurring challenge. Every year, new people move in. And every year, those people ask those same questions that we've asked a year before and the year before that. And so we appreciate the patience of Polte and of the council members who are present and also of our consultants who are helping to answer those same questions again. And I think at the close of that meeting, we were able to provide a variety of information to help those customers, those residents, understand a little bit better about this financing method. We've invited both Mike Fiso and Mark Reader and their associates to come and give us a presentation. They're going to do a brief overview of information that you are all familiar with, but we want to share it with the public because there's new residents in our community. And I'm now going to turn some time over to Mark Reader.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, good evening. Mark Reader with Stifel Nicolaus, and we're pleased to be your bond underwriter in connection with the transaction. As Mr. Jarvis mentioned, we had a very nice meeting, I thought, the other day, last Thursday, educating the local community on the purpose of the issuance of the bonds. As you know, and as outlined in the feasibility report and the documentation that you have in front of you, we're talking about the issuance of general obligation bonds, as you know, which we do about every year, with the public policy objective of keeping our tax rate, our secondary tax rate for the repayment of the bonds always at $3.25 per 100, as we have the last 12 years. So the item in front of you, we are not suggesting or proposing that the tax rate will exceed $3.25. The district has created some bonding capacity this year as a result of an increase in the tax base within District Number Two. Our tax base is up about 7% this year, I think, as you're aware. So we're seeing some nice, steady growth in District Number Two. The 7% growth, along with some extra cash that's in the debt service fund, is allowing us to size the bond issue at about $2 million, the purpose of which will be used to reimburse Polte for the Spiritway Public Infrastructure improvements. And so this is the presentation, as Mr. Jarvis mentioned, that frankly, you're already very much aware of. And with that brief kind of overview, I'm glad to entertain any questions of the board.
I just wanted to mention that Polte has made these slides available on the portal for any of the residents in Anthem, so that if they weren't able to attend the meeting last Thursday, they can see what was presented.
Yeah.
Ms. Garcia, do we have those presentations also linked on our town website? Thank you. Just wanted to verify that, so everybody has access multiple ways. Are there any questions regarding the presentation? All right. I think it's important every year that we continue this partnership of having you come out, present to the public, to address any questions or misunderstandings that may be out there. And we appreciate your services.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, with the public hearing, I want to open it up. Is there any members of public that have any questions at this time? Closing, opening to the public. Are there any questions from council? I'll ask one more time. No? With that, we need a motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD-2, 234-17, which in part authorizes the sale and issuance of not to exceed $2,225,000 of aggregate principal amount in general obligation bond, Series 2017 and related matters. Please note the current bond issued size is at $1,900,000, subject to change based on the financial interest rates and cash in the debt service fund.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution as read.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Make a motion that we adjourn for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Moving into item 11, which is the manager's report. Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'll try to be brief, but we've got some important business to take care of here. First, I would like to read a letter into the record. It says, "Dear Mr. Billingsley, we are pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFER, for the fiscal year ended 2016 qualifies for the GFOA, which stands for the Government Finances Officers Association, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents significant accomplishment by a government and its management." We could not have done it without the assistance of our finance department. So if you'd like to come up, Joe. And in particular, I would like to recognize Mr. Gabe Garcia, our past finance director, and Marcia Gert, is that how I pronounce your last name?
-- Gert, who is our accountant that retired a few months ago. So with that, I wanted to present, and we will keep this prominently hung in the finance department, the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to our finance department, and certainly recognizing those two past employees. And thank you very much, and I've also provided just with a press release to send out with respect to this. So thank you very much. Thanks for coming back from retirement.
Thank you.
Maybe we could get you to stay around a little while longer. Secondarily, I wanted to acknowledge that our fire chief, Mr. David Strayer, is -- has now completed one portion of the FEMA National Fire Academy, and that program lasted from July 21st to August 4th, and it is called Executive Development. So Dave, would you like to tell everybody what the program was about, and then we'll give you some applause and congratulate you on your achievement?
Mayor Walter, members of the council, the program is called the Executive Fire Officer Program. It's a national program held at the National Emergency Training Center in Emmonsburg, Maryland. It's a four-part program. Year one is executive development. The easy part's done. Now I have a 60-page applied research project to start working on, and so I'll be diving into that next. But it also goes through community risk reduction in year two, and then there's two other elements after that. It's pretty much the gold standard in the fire service that you see across the country for fire chiefs. So I'm very thrilled that I have the opportunity to take everything I learned at the Fire Academy and apply it here in Florence. I'm excited about that, and hopefully you are too. So that's really it in a nutshell.
And thanks go out to the mayor and council for supporting us and being able to allow Dave to participate in this program for the next three years and also this year. Next, I wanted to announce that we have again been awarded the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant Awards. We have received occupant protection overtime of $5,000, DUI impaired overtime of $10,000, traffic enforcement overtime of $10,000, and a speed trailer for usage in the town. So thank you very much. Jennifer, thank you very much, chief and lieutenant, for your hard work again, and we want to tell, when you're down at the league conference and you see Alberto, who's the head of Governor's Office of Highway Safety, tell him thank you on behalf of Florence, but congratulations. Lastly, I've mentioned this before, I'm going to mention it again. September 5, 2017 will be the first day of our next Florence Police Department Citizens Academy. There is still room to enroll, so please contact Sergeant Don Campbell or the office if you're interested in enrolling. And I'm pleased to also present to mayor and council that on August 10, 2017, we were audited. We were audited by the Department of Homeland Security regarding our Stone Garden grant that we have employed for a number of years here in Florence. And in our last grant cycle, we received $88,000 for funding overtime, equipment, reimbursement for fuel costs. And I'm happy to report that the town and the police department has met all the requirements of the grant and we're in full compliance. We will be looking to apply again. So thank you very much, chief and lieutenant, and all the members of the police department. That's all I have.
Thank you. Call to the public. Are there any members of public that have anything that they would like to say at this Closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Hawkins?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilmember Anderson?
I would like to thank the town for sponsoring a trip to Denver for several of councilmembers. We met up to visit the Innovation Pavilion project. It was quite impressive, and I know you're going to hear more about it as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wal?
Wednesday morning at 6:30, I drove to the Pinell County Historical Museum, where there was a small assembly of interested people from the museum and from the Arizona State Prison at Florence, where they were successful in starting or restarting a 1953 former Town of Florence historic fire truck, and they were able to drive it under its own power all the way over to the prison, where it will begin a process of restoration. And this was the beginning of a project that I think was originally suggested by Chief Strayer and was eventually taken over by the Historical Museum with our volunteer support. And there's also a component from CAC, where there's a training program at the prison to help with the restoration. It was pretty exciting when they began to fire up the truck. They had the hood up, and there was so much dust as they were turning it over, it was like a haboob. But the tires were inflated, and they weren't all that old. I think they were maybe seven years old, so they withstood the airing up overnight until the truck was driven over to the prison. So I want to thank everyone involved with that effort, and there will be more to come. There'll be some fundraising going on by the museum, some public relations going on in cooperation with the prison, CAC, and I hope to bring forward a proclamation in the next couple of meetings supporting that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
I just want to echo what John said about our trip to Colorado and allowing us to go. It was really a sight to see, and there was a lot of lessons learned about the partnerships that can be made, not just on the local level, but state and nationally, and how they really came to build up a lot of the communities. It was very educational, and I feel like there's a lot of things that we can take back and implement here in Florence, whether through Innovation Pavilion or on our own, too. There's a lot of things that we could just take away from that trip. Also, I just want to thank staff for, you know, the grants that we've been getting and the audit and passing, a lot of great news. So it's fantastic. I appreciate everyone moving Florence forward and all the hard work that you guys continue to do. So that's all for tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Walridge?
I don't have anything tonight.
Well, in closing, I want to thank everybody for everything that they've put forth. We are going to be attending the Arizona League of Cities and Towns this week, so there's council, staff, and just being able to work with different municipalities as well as state agencies. So that will be an amazing opportunity and experience. We do have an extensive executive session this evening. We will come out and adjourn from the executive session. It might be at 10 o'clock tonight. So with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.